Welcome to the August 19th, 2024 Meeting of the Grafton School Committee. It is a Monday night, which is a little bit of a departure for us. So nice to see so many folks in our gallery tonight. I'm going to open the floor for public comment at this time. If anybody has public comment, you want to approach the desk here to give your public comment, limited to three minutes. Nobody's moving. Everybody's shaking their heads. Okay, we'll move on. General business, we have a summer programming review. So come on up, those of you who are giving that report. I know it says that.
Yeah, why don't we separate them into two pieces? If it's okay with you, since this is up, why don't we go with Melissa and Nicole?
All right. So we'll get an update on the extended school year program from Melissa Johnson and Chris Kitchell, maybe. But you're not Chris Kitchell.
Except Nicole McDonald.
I was just reading. And Nicole McDonald. Welcome. We're getting off to a great start tonight.
Taking a well-deserved vacation after extended school year.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Well, thank you and welcome. Thank you for coming back, Melissa. Nice to see you.
Oh, you're welcome. So I'm excited to talk about our extended school year program. Here we are. Another year has ended. We had a great turnout. It was a great program. So here's a look at our extended school year program. Again, all of our programming took place this year at Grafton High School again. It's nice to have everyone under one roof in order to effectively program with staff as well as students. And then this year, our sessions ran from July 9th to August 8th, Thursday, August 8th. So this year, our extended school year program had 168 students. We had 12 walk-in therapy students only who received either just speech and language or occupational therapy or physical therapy. And then we had 10 community peers join us in our preschool program, which was awesome. We also employed 101 staff members who were truly instrumental in our day-to-day workings of our program. So rolling into this year for our extended school year program, we did have some positive changes. We hired a clerk to man our main office to help us with our extended school year program and as Rachel will talk about, as well as the summer enrichment program that were both held at the high school. She helped with late arrivals, early dismissals, all of those attendance pieces. So it truly was awesome to have her right in the main lobby there. We had created a dedicated extended school year website for families during the year. If students qualified for extended school year services, team chairs would give a flyer with a QR code for families to be able to access the website that had all of the pertinent information about the program. So that was instrumental. We also added more signage for our extended school year program as well as the summer enrichment, so families knew where they were going. And then this year, for our extended school year program, we added a half day on Friday, August 9th, for staff to be able to pack up, get ready to move everything back to their designated buildings, as well as to give them time to thoughtfully write progress reports for the students who were there. So just some highlights of some kids in action having some fun. And it's never too early to look ahead, so extended school year 2025, I'm sure it's right around the corner. So a couple of things that I was brainstorming as we think about extended school year 2025. I want to be able to increase the awareness to our ESY website, making sure families have all that information, are gravitated towards that page. So we're going to work on increasing that awareness. We're going to continue to look at programming to make sure time on learning for students is there, as well as brainstorming ways to make transportation a little bit more streamlined. That's always, that's always a challenge. But worked well this year, but brainstorming ways to make it a little bit more streamlined with less disruptions. Anything else that you want to add? So kind of short and sweet. Any questions about our program this year?
Anybody on the committee have questions? No questions? Okay. I guess I would just say that I did hear from, from the general public that the signage was even more improved over last year. I know that that was something that I commented on last year, and I'll comment again, well done. I know it's very daunting for the families to come into the high school for the first time, and it's so great for the kids to get that, get that exposure repeatedly. Someday, we hope, they'll be in that school. So I think it's really nice that they get to experience it. Lots of happy faces, lots of positive feedback. And the additional day was, that was really smart. I hope that that results in better feedback for families.
Yeah, I think that that additional half day really supported our staff to be able to not feeling like, you know, when kids are still there, they were trying to like organize, collect data, do their, so they could really focus on the students during that last week as opposed to focusing in on transitioning out of ESY. And I will say that our, I think our staff appreciated that time to be able to pack up, to make sure we, you know, we had folks bringing, what, I would say crucial things like data books and things like that back to their designated buildings that day so that they could ensure that it got exactly to the room that they needed it to get to. And then it really did allow us to be able to organize all, all the furniture, materials, specialized equipment at Grafton High School to just make it a whole heck of a lot easier for our maintenance staff to know where all that equipment was meant to go. So it really was a, a well-used half day for all of our staff running around and kind of sweating, moving things and furniture and all the bit. But I would say we got good feedback, I think, from staff about that day.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you so much for the presentation and another excellent year.
And I will plug Melissa, the level and intensity of organization from Melissa Johnson is probably unmatched to anybody in the world, honestly. So she already told me I have like six pages of notes of things that, you know, we're, we're going to improve on for next year. So I will say that the, you know, notification piece, the ESY website, all of that, all the organization to get transportation set up, everything was Melissa. Chris and I, and Chris, I'm saying this, he's not here, but are just background characters in the ESY planning and onsite people. We usually are like, oh, Melissa, whatever, you know? So I have to say, you know, she really, really is absolutely essential to our extended school year planning.
Well, thank you so much for all your hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
All right. Up next, I'd like to introduce Rachel Murray, one of our co-coordinators of our enrichment program, which basically is a sister program runs for the, I think, the exact same amount of time?
Exactly.
All right. So they're co-partners at GHS. Rachel was a co-coordinator this, in the first year, and it was with Ryan Mercier. And they took over from Lisa Rice, who you know, helped build up the program. They spent some time prior to actually taking over with her, and they did a beautiful job.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Rachel. Thrilled to be here and share with you how the summer went. So it was a little bit like the blind leading the blind because Ryan and I, my co-director, we really did not know what we were doing. But found our way through sometimes with trial and error, but we, so we've just wrapped up these five weeks. And I just, I can't even tell you how, we were just thrilled with how everything went. And so much positive camps that were offered to the kids and great feedback from the parents. There were 26 instructors that were involved over the course of the summer. And just to give you an overview, each week, we had an average of 18 classes that ran. We had 191, an average each week of 191 camp spots. So some of those were there in the morning and the afternoon. And then on average, 71 kids each week that stayed for the lunch. And one of the weeks, it was like 86 kids or something that stayed for lunch. So, and it was great because a lot of the kids signed up, a lot of the kids were repeat customers and signed up for, you know, multiple weeks. So we really got to know them and the parents as well. And one of our goals was just to really make each week run as efficiently as possible with checking in and checking out, because you can imagine with that many kids coming in that cafeteria space, it's, can get very congested, it can be confusing. So our goal was to really make it just as checking in and checking out and making sure people were leaving with the appropriate family member was a huge priority to us. So that was, we had, you had to sign your child out. Also, Ryan and I were onsite every day at the camp. And I think that that was really helpful as well because we had kindergarten through senior and high school. However, the, the bulk of the students were from kindergarten, I would say, to sixth grade. And there were a lot, you know, every day there would be, there were just always things that would come up with kids. And so it was really good that Ryan and I were there to help with whatever it was. And also with that many kids having lunch, it was really important to have just all hands on deck for that. The addition to Kari Overman in the office was huge, 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 a big shout out to Kari. She was fantastic. And that was, that was really nice not to have to worry about just kids coming in late or leaving, leaving early or whatever. It was just very helpful to have her, have her there. And then in terms of, I, just like Melissa, I have a whole notebook full of what I, what I would like to do next year. What I would say probably at the top of the list would be if we could look at a different registration system, because the way the registration system is set up right now, you can enroll for classes, but no payment is required to enroll your child, which is great for families. However, you could sign your child up for camps all summer long, and then you hold spots and your plans change, and then you're not held by anything because you never paid. So I, I think it's really worth exploring a registration system that could really be more cost-effective just all around. And also, I think it would be instrumental in helping with less administrative time as well. So I think that would be something to explore for next year. And then just another, a positive thing for next year, I think it would be fun. We, we wanted to do more with a Facebook presence for the camps and posting pictures each day for families that could, you know, that, whose children were there and they could see what was going on at their kids' camps. But overall, we were thrilled with how it went and happy with the number of students that signed up and the enrollment and just the variety of classes that were offered and amazing instructors, 26 different instructors that helped out over the course.
That's great.
Yeah. Any questions?
Any questions? Come on, come on.
I actually, I think this is a joint Rachel and Melissa question, maybe? Is there a way, particularly as kids get older, to maybe coordinate ESY and these programs? So, you know, you've got a sixth, seventh grader who goes to ESY and then could transition into lunch and have sort of, you know, recommended activities like a cooking class that might reinforce some of the math work they were doing, you know? Is there any way we could mesh these together a little bit more?
We did have, we did have quite a few ESY students that were on that side in the morning.
Okay.
And they would come over to us in the afternoon.
So, yeah, maybe there's more communication we can do to kind of help families navigate or figure that out, because I think that seems like a win, right?
And, and that's in my notebook of next year is that I would like to have more communication with ESY, just in terms of doing exactly what you said.
That's great. Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you and Ryan for taking this on. Rachel, it's, it's such a great program. It's been wonderful to watch it grow. It's an affordable way for parents to find great educational and instructional opportunities in the summer for their kids. I love that we have teacher, Grafton teachers helping out and familiar faces to the kids, so it's a little less daunting. So it's just nice to have you and Ryan and check, step in, and, and thank you for your suggestions for next year, because that would have been my question, and that sounds like something that we should explore. So thank you so much. Appreciate it. And extend my thanks to Ryan.
Laura, you were super helpful, too. I would ask Laura, could you post on Facebook camps? And it was like she would work magic every time she would, and we'd get more enrollments. So it was great. So thank you for your help, too.
Of course.
And to everybody that helped us. We appreciated it. Thank you.
Madam Chair? I have a question.
Just one second.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Go ahead. I have a quick question. No, that's okay. My question is in regards to the registration for next year. Is there any way that you could make it that older children, like over 13, wouldn't need a parent to sign them out? I know there were a lot of kids that kind of didn't even go because if they could have ridden their bike there and their parent didn't need to drive them, or if they could have walked there because the parent's working, they would have done it. But the parent didn't have the ability to do a sign in or sign out. But, you know, 13, a child can certainly.
Sure.
Ride a bike or.
Yeah, that's something that we could talk about. And we did have one, was that your child that rode their bike?
No, he didn't ride his bike, no.
We did have one parent that just let us know that my child will ride their bike each day, which I thought was awesome. I love that.
Yeah. And then one other question is, I know that some parents, the only, and I didn't get any negative feedback, but the only feedback I got was in regards to some of the courses, some kid, parents sign their child up for the same course multiple times, not realizing that it was the exact same course multiple times, such as like the woodworking or whatever, like, and they had no idea that it was the exact same. It just could be clarified.
And I think, and that's in my notes for next year, too. It's just that I would like to have the descriptions. And now going through it, I feel like that we have a better handle on exactly what wording needs to happen and also just a better handle on courses that could be offered and maybe like a part one, part two.
Right.
You know, week one or week three.
Yeah. But you did a wonderful job.
I agree with you, though. I think that there's room for improvement on some of the wording.
Yeah, thank you. No, but you guys did a wonderful job. Blind leading the blind. It was amazing. Better than I could do with sight. So. Anything else? Great job. Thank you again for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Nicole.
All right. We will not, we'll skip over agenda item B under general business. We don't have contracts ready tonight. We'll be featuring those at our next meeting, so look for that. The 2024-2025 calendar. Again.
So little backstory to this. Tonight, I'll be asking the school committee, as you stated, to consider making a modification to the upcoming year's calendar. So when we, we finished up negotiations, that was, the contract was voted on the last meeting, but one of the goals going into negotiations was to increase the time for staff development and improvement. We have very little time, and we're in great company with, I would say, most schools, where you have a day, usually two or three days before the school year starts to ramp up. And then you've got some early release days during the year, and many districts have additional days, multiple days will be full, no school days, but staff are there to work on a host of things. The last time we negotiated, obviously, two of the bigger pillars of negotiation, or I guess that's the best word I can come up with, are obviously money and time. Those are two big things, and both play a role. Last time, we ended up giving more time because we didn't have the funds to provide as much financial incentives or pay as we would have liked to. So this time, we were looking to get some time back. So when we do have time, I won't read it to you, but that's the work that we do. It's not cookie cutter. Sometimes it's whole district. Oftentimes, it's building-based. It can be, you bring grade levels together. It's critical. We have very little of it. In the past three years, we have one day before school starts, so think of that as like seven hours to cram in, in theory, a district-wide meeting, a building-wide meeting, classroom prep, and open door day. It's impossible. So we've made huge changes to that, and it, it's kind of worked, not been optimal. And then during the school year, we only have those five half-days. If you think about it, it's three or four hours. It's something. It's, it's good. It's not enough. I mean, you're talking about 15 hours. Like, a company wouldn't, in a given year, have 15 hours. And then we do have, I'll get to it in a second, but the way, the past three years, we've also have 20 roughly one-hour meetings after school. 10 of those are staff meetings that take place monthly, so 10 other meetings. So you're talking about for a whole school year with all the pieces, special education, like a lot of complexity, really 25 hours to, to work together. That's, it's not enough, quite frankly. So going in, in the white, going into the negotiations, I just spoke to what we had. We have 100, we had 182 contractual days for staff. So we had 100, you have to have a 180 at least student days. We had one day before school starts and one day for parent conferences. So bare minimum. We also had 20 after-school meetings that I just talked about, 10 meetings that are building-based and then 10 that are dedicated for staff meetings. We looked at Westboro as kind of what we were aiming for, thinking we probably wouldn't get there, but eventually, that's where I'd like us to be, to have 184 days, and they have 50 meetings after school a year, which is great. And that's among the very, the most in central Mass, I would say. So knowing we weren't going to get there, but we kind of aspired to go in that direction. Where we landed with the agreement was to add one teacher day prior to the start of the school year, the exception being this coming year. So we already had this, the calendar set with staff returning on that Monday. If we added a day before, we'd have to do it the previous Friday. Staff have understandably already have vacation schedules. It just wasn't fair, and this was midsummer by the time we settled. So what I'm going to be asking the committee to do today is to look at the 24-25 calendar and look to insert one day that would be for professional development. We obviously would not have students that day, and the school year would be extended by one day. They still have 180, but obviously, it would be bumped a day forward. And then we also increased our after-school meetings, which is a great thing, from 20 to 30. So we are moving very much in a positive direction. The other components, we've talked about that, the day. The other time component that came up was we, because we wanted those 10 hours very much. So the give, if you will, was around the length of the actual school day. So when you look at Grafton's, at least since I've been here and prior to that, had a six-hour 30-minute day in comparison to area districts, and this would go more or less statewide. We exceeded what most districts have for schooling by 15, roughly 15 minutes with the exception of Millbury daily. So we saw that as an opportunity without having, I don't believe we're going to have a negative impact on our teaching and learning, students, et cetera. We were able to secure the additional meetings and the additional day and decrease the school day by five minutes. We obviously still have 10 minutes more each day than area districts. So that was the compromise. So with that, I would be recommending that we, we can, obviously, we've got a choice, and we're going to reduce by five minutes. We could either start the school day later or end the school day five minutes earlier, which is what I would recommend, and I'm happy to speak to that. So two components. Have I lost anybody yet? The number of days, okay? And the five minutes. Any questions about the five minutes at the end of the day?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Not a question, but I'm going to go ahead and just ask you to explain why. Because we run the negotiating committee, and we've discussed both the morning and the afternoon, and I think you should just, that's going to come up, so we might as well just.
In terms of, in terms of core values and things we've talked about as a committee, for years, we've valued later start times. Even though it's 300 seconds, my initial thought was, okay, we can bump it back five minutes. I don't have to go out to traffic duty for five minutes. Awesome. And that all sounded great. But then I talked to the principals and assistant principals, and the reality trumped that value, if you will, of, of having the later start time. And what happens is, we have four tiers. Most districts have three tiers. We have four tiers of busing. So by the time we get to that fourth tier, things are pretty good at the high school. We'll still have late buses and stuff. But by the fourth tier, so that's North Grafton and, South Grafton Elementary School, every bus has now had three routes where they've hit, you know, traffic, they've hit a detour, they've had, you name it. You know, Suzie, they can't find Suzie, and is she on the bus? Is she on, not on the bus? That happens, of course, every day. So by the time they get to the actual dismissal, we're not way off, but, but we're off. We're, we're at least 10, 15 minutes off. Is the five minutes going to just make everything great and we're like the Japanese transit system? No, no way. We are still very M, M BTA. But it definitely helps. That five minutes makes that 10 or 15 minutes less impactful in a negative way, no question about it. So my initial, I think I shared with the committee, my initial thought was, let's start later. That was trumped with, with that reality. Am I off on that?
I just have a question. Have you had experience with the Japanese transits in some way? This is really confusing to me, Dr. Constance.
They are renowned for unbelievably on time.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought, I just, maybe I missed it because I also went down the Japanese. But partly was, we didn't want our younger children getting home even later. Did you mention that?
That's true, too.
That was like one of the bigger concerns, was that.
They would get home a little later. Yeah, I guess you could slice it either way. They're already getting home later than they should.
Right. So now they're even to get five. Yeah. So that was like a bigger.
Less later than they should.
That was a bigger concern, and also, we talked about wishing, I think that's where you just went into, wishing we could do later start times first and then have the, and then have the elementary school swap out, and that is where the, where we can't do it with the train.
And we certainly tried. We have maxed out, the fact that we have four tiers is so unique. We are pushed to the limit with 30 minutes between tiers. It's just.
Yeah, and we tried to shorten that.
We could put it on paper, it would not happen. It just wouldn't.
Yeah, and the transportation company heard us and heard our question and our concern, but basically said it's got to be either at the beginning or at the end, all the way across the district. Yep.
And even then, having the kids start elementary school five minutes later, it's already nine o'clock, that's harder, you know? So that, that's kind of why.
Harder on families. Yep, exactly. Yep.
So it helps a little, you know, I think we're saying the same thing just differently. It helps, it definitely helps in the afternoon. And that need, to me, is, to all of us, I believe, is greater than the benefit in the morning.
I have one question. And I approve this 100%. Is there a plan to notify our kindergarten and our kindergarten families in particular of this change? Because the bus schedules have gone out.
Yep.
And they're going to have to wait at the bus stop for their kids. And I know it's only five minutes, but you know how, you know how it gets.
Yep.
If you're just a little bit late, a little bit, you know, I think our kindergarten parents in particular.
Yep.
Probably need a text or something. Is that possible?
100%, and it will happen tomorrow.
Oh, fantastic.
They've been ready to go and, you know, ready last week, but I wanted to have this discussion before they put it out. And then if we did end up flipping and go in the other direction, that would be a communication nightmare.
It was, it was great that the bus schedules were available earlier than usual, but then I thought about it, and I'm like, oh, now we're going to have to communicate that they're wrong. Okay. Well, here we go. All right.
Which would be a big deal in Japan.
Do we want? It's unacceptable.
I feel like our Grafton parents can handle it. I have confidence.
Do we want to vote on this piece and then go back to the rest of the calendar? Yeah.
I think we should.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I make a motion?
Forward, please. I'm just going to do it because I heard you're, you're quiet. Go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the committee approve ending the school day five minutes early. I move that the committee approve ending the school day five minutes early.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, thank you. All right, we'll go back to the other piece.
So one additional P-Day, PD Day, that will only be in the next three years, that will only impact us this one time. Every other, the following two years, it will be at the start of the school year, and that's the purpose of it. So for the coming year, in looking at the calendar, I'm recommending that we insert a PD Day into that second week in March. So between the tenth and the fourteenth, that would, no matter where we put it, the hundred-and-eightieth day becomes June thirteenth as, as a result. Picked March, it's kind of, in the educational world, it's kind of the endless month. It is definitely not broken up when every other, I think we've got a nice balance in every other month. The consistency is great, but i- if, I don't know, I'm giving you a longer story than you need. I think that second week makes a lot of sense.
Committee, I heard you open your mouth, but were you trying to get my attention?
I don't think I was, actually, but.
Just say Madam Chair, and then I'll know.
I was not planning to.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Awesome.
Could I make a recommendation on a date? But to, to us?
I mean.
For consideration?
Sure.
When, when he, when Dr. Cummings is speaking of the second week of March, I would recommend, if it were up to me, March tenth, Monday. And the reason being is that daylight savings time is on March ninth. More accidents happen on March tenth than any other day of the year. And for Dr. Cummings' safety as traffic guard, I would, crossing guard, rather, I'm sorry. I think that that would actually be a very good date to get students acclimated, and especially our students that are driving.
I mean, for all of us.
For everybody.
For everybody.
And it helps parents have a long weekend.
Except for the poor teachers.
Except for the poor teachers, but it, it would give parents a longer weekend also, like if they wanted to go away with their children as opposed to just a Wednesday randomly day off.
Other committee feedback.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I was actually going to recommend Friday, when I did speak, but that actually makes a lot of sense to me, the tenth, the Monday. Dr. Cummings, do you think that will matter to the teachers? Do you think they more like that kind of a day on a Friday? Does it matter? I mean, we do them on Wednesdays typically.
I think we get the range. There'll be some that prefer a Friday, some are good with the Monday.
Yeah.
I was also going to recommend the Friday, but I really liked Christie's idea for a couple reasons. My one thing, the reason why I was going to do a Friday was just that we, teachers don't have to worry about preparing for the next day. They'll have the weekend, but I feel like on Monday, we're used to having holidays that day anyway. Like, we have a lot of Monday holidays, so I think that's super reasonable. I think for parents, working parents, it's much easier to take a day to work from home on the beginning or the end of the week. A lot of companies have no meeting Mondays or no meeting Fridays, and Wednesdays are a tough day. If we're going to do it in the middle, that's just a harder day for parents, and I also think it, it's tougher on the kids, but I, I really, that was, that's a great idea. So I'm, I like that.
I will, I'll be the voice of, of popularity and say that coming into this meeting, I was going to propose the Wednesday, only because it's consistent with the other days. We, we've long had this conversation about not doing professional development on Fridays, because, you know, getting your bang for your buck in terms of staff time and effort. Friday is not the greatest day for paying attention. Nobody wants to have an important meeting on a Friday. Thank you, Christie. But I think it's very smart, a very smart idea to do it on the Monday. I think it's a win-win. And I hope that, well, I'll, I'll let the committee finish discussing, but I would throw my support behind the tenth. I think that's a great idea.
Great. Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we have, we amend the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five calendar to include Monday, March tenth, twenty-twenty-five for professional development, and a day, student day off.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? We'll move to vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Christie. That was a great idea. I didn't realize. I'd like to forget daylight savings is actually a thing. So, all right.
That's great.
And then in future years, that will just become, like you said, an extra day in August.
Correct.
Can I ask a question? Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about future days, our future years? Do we always start on Tuesday? Are we going to be thinking about starting on Wednesday? Is that going to? I'm just curious if you've thought about it.
No, I hadn't, yeah.
Great, we'll think about it some other time.
Okay.
I just, I would like to take the opportunity to point out that we will end the school year on Friday the thirteenth. Barring.
Sure, we'll have at least one snow day.
Maybe not. Maybe it'll be our lucky day. All right, GMS and GHS handbooks.
I jumped away.
You sure did.
I don't have a presentation for the handbooks. We have them, I can call them up on Drive if you like.
I'd like you to read them out loud.
We don't have that kind of time.
I do.
Overruled. Yeah. Why don't we, since there's no presentation, why don't we do a motion to approve? First, the GMS, and then we'll discuss, and then GHS, and then discuss. They, we have to approve them regardless. It's kind of a rubber-stampy thing.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that the committee approve the Grafton Middle School Handbook, twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Yes.
Okay. So I've really deep-dived handbooks. Like, when I say deep-dived, Dr. Cummings.
I am aware.
You are aware of the amount of emails that I've sent you in regards to what a handbook is. And this is my first time looking at handbooks, so when I do something for the first time, I go in full headfirst. So I had sent you a lot of edits and questions, and some of those have been addressed, some of them haven't. That's not really the big issue that I have. This weekend, I started looking at the policies in the handbook. And I'm going to, I, just for the people that are here or whoever watching on TV, like, what are the differences between policies and handbooks? So a policy is a major district-wide ruling, right, and a procedure that have legal implications or significant impact versus a handbook, which is school-specific procedures and provide guidance for day-to-day rules. And some policies are required for inclusion in the handbooks. While other policies may just state information that needs to be in the handbook. So I've gone through, and it appears there are categories of policies that need to be included in a handbook. Those categories include conduct, rights and responsibilities of students, non-discrimination, harassment, and any policy that explicitly says it must be in the handbook. Okay? Are we following? So the reason why the conduct and rights and responsibilities have to be in, we have policies like Policy B G D, Policy J I, they state that. They state in the policy that policies of conduct and policies of rights and responsibilities. So I went through. When I say I deep-dived, I went through. And the problem is now is that we have policies, like, when we did this major transfer, there are policies that we have on our books that we actually never really approved, but they should have been approved. And so we're kind of in this weird limbo, whereas if it's, it's in our handbook, if it's in our policy manual right now, as it's shown, it really needs to be in our handbook. And I can list out all the policies that you want right now, if, I'm just going to. So we have, like, Policy E E A E C, student conduct on school buses. Policy J K, student conduct. Policy J I, students' rights and responsibilities. Policy J I C, student discipline. Policy J I C A, dress code. I'll, I'll provide this in an email later. Policy J I C F A, prohibition of hazing. J I C F A dash E, hazing. J I F C B, bullying prevention. J I H, searches by administration and interrogation by police. Policy J K A A, physical restraint. So those are just on the rights and responsibilities and conduct. Next, you have the non-discrimination and harassment. So the reason why these need to be in is because federal law, such as Title Nine and Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act, require that schools have to communicate clear policies on discrimination and harassment, and including these procedures for addressing complaints. So putting these in the student handbook helps ensure that compliance. So the policies we have with that are A C, non-discrimination policy. A C R, another non-discrimination policy. A C A, non-discrimination on basis of sex. A C E, non-discrimination on basis of disability. A C A B, sexual harassment. J B, equal opportunities. J I C K, harassment of students. J I B A, harassment policy. Next. Are you excited?
Yeah, I'm not sure where we're going, but keep going.
You have specific policies that require to be in the policy manual, because they state it in the policy itself. Like, E C A F, that's the security cameras in schools. E F D, school nutrition program. J I N D B, empowered digital use policy. I K F, graduation requirements. I really want to talk to them about that one in a minute. J I C H, alcohol and tobacco. J F attendance, J H, student attendance. J J F R, athletic concussions and regulations. So my problem is, is that I, I don't feel like we can, these, these handbooks don't have the policy information that's needed in them at this point.
So what I would suggest is, if you give me that list that you believe we need, I'll put that in an appendix, and we can simply attach it.
So that's fine, but in addition, policy subcommittee is going to have to meet, because a lot of these policies have not been fully approved.
Sure. And we did, what's interesting, I'm not doubting any of your work, I know you did a deep dive, and I, I think it's great. When, we had the coordinated program review, you might remember, this past fall. And one of the big things is to look at handbooks for everything you're talking about.
Yeah.
And I think they realize that if we have all of those policies in every handbook, every one of them is going to be
Oh, I.
literally two-hundred pages, and nobody reads the handbook anyhow, never mind if it's two-hundred pages.
I fully agree.
When I, in talking to them, I had them look at everything, and they approved it. That's why you have to almost pass the, the review. That's where we came up with the appendix piece. The one thing that was a little tricky is Kevin, Kevin Carney at the high school, when we get to that one. He loves putting policy, which is fine. He, he was picking out policies from the appendix and putting them into the, the front of the book, if you will.
Right. But the question is, I guess, back in the fall, that was before our transfer was complete. So the policies that were being looked at by
Sure.
you were just saying are not at all the same as what the policies are currently.
I could debate the, I don't know. It's, it's got to be relatively close.
Well.
But.
Okay.
But okay. Yeah, that, that work definitely needs to be done.
So, and then my question with, I'm sorry, Mrs. Off.
Could I just, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Is, because one of the things that I was hoping we were going to see with these handbooks is that rather than listing the entire text of the policy every time, and we had a conversation about this in committee, was just having hyperlinks.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
And making it more of kind of a living document, and that way, the most updated version of any policy is always in the handbook. And there will always be a few exceptions to that that are like the top tier.
GMS does a great job of that.
But is, is your interpretation that all of those have to be in the document physically, or kind of linked suffice?
My interpretation, I, I would actually, I'd like to actually schedule a meeting where we could talk about this more.
Well, that sounds great.
I, I know it does, in depth. But, yeah, my interpretation, especially the ones that state in the policy that this policy must be included in the handbook, that it be included in the handbook.
I, I guess I would say if we were printing out handbooks and distributing them physically.
No, no, I, I agree, but I'm, I'm saying like, I agree with you that we could put a, a link would suffice.
A link would suffice, okay.
A link would suffice.
Great.
But my question, I guess, with the graduation one, and this kind of blew my mind when I was reading it, in the high school handbook, is that.
Hold on, we're just talking about the middle school right now.
Oh, okay, so then the middle school?
Yeah, hold on to that.
Yeah.
So middle school only.
So is there anything that, anybody wants principal and assistant principal to do in terms of changes, and I should have thanked at the outset a few of you sent? You know, changes to be made, edits, suggestions, and I thought they did a great job implementing those.
That's because you didn't get mine yet.
Great. Bring it on.
I did have one question about the, the electronic device protocol, which I happened to find, as I was browsing through, that it's clicked, it's linked from the handbook. Is that new this year?
I think they made a change to it last year in terms of their, their protocol.
We're going to do a first reading on electronic devices when we get to policy, so it's going to further change.
This is a protocol.
Oh, the protocol, okay, I apologize.
This is the GMS-only protocol.
Yeah.
And it talks about parking lots, and like, I was completely unaware that we were doing this. I did not know. I thought it was, you know, kids put their phone in their backpack and they're fine. That's, or in their locker.
Yeah.
Excuse me, middle school's locker. And this, this is different, so I didn't know.
Yeah, I don't know enough about it. We can.
It's not part of the handbook, so.
Future agenda, we can certainly
All right.
ask Chris to come and speak to it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Dr. Cummings, I did send you the list, and, and they did a wonderful job implementing everything, especially, you know, getting rid of the he's and she's and making it more inclusive. But my only question is, Friday Academy, is that still active? Is that, they mentioned it, I asked in the email.
I don't know if they've done it since COVID.
Nobody seemed to answer on that. So, yeah, that's my only question based on the list of edits that I had asked you. And I do think that we should also be addressing, since they said alphabetized, which is great, but they address MCAS. However, they don't address STAR, and I know a lot of parents don't really know what that is, and I think a blurb on that would be beneficial in the handbook, since they do put an MCAS blurb.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, I think a little, a little bit about STAR, because it's a term that they're going to hear. I love that it's alphabetized. I think it's very easy, especially for parents coming in from the elementary schools. This is, there's a lot, and STAR's smiling, he knows. It's a lot. It's, it's a huge transition. There's a lot of nervousness around it. They're going to start hearing words and phrases that they're unfamiliar with, and this is a great way to introduce a lot of these concepts to families and to students. So I really appreciate the ease of use and the, the, um, the pictures are quite nice, too. But, yeah, I have a couple of minor, minor things I'll send along after we approve it. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Four, one, zero. Okay, moving on to the high school year, I almost said yearbook, I'm sorry. On how to prove in that, high school handbook. I'll take a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move that the committee approve the twenty-twenty-four slash twenty-twenty-five Grafton High School handbook.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? I know you had the thing about graduation. I'm just looking for that right now. Go ahead.
Okay, so my question regards to graduation. This is a policy that I believe policy subcommittee needs to take back, because it states in the, in the handbook here, that for instance, it states the graduation requirements. And this is a new policy that we took on from M A S C, but it states that we need four years of phys ed to graduate. Yet, Mr. Carney writes you need seven and a half credits, which equates to three semesters. That's a.
And health.
Yeah, that's, so it's a big, there's a lot of discrepancies between the policy and what we're saying. It's going to be confusing for kids, for parents. There's, that's.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I also wanted to mention the physical education one.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
All right. So I think the confusion is that it's, physical education does include health, but I think the credit hours might be wrong. I could be wrong about that.
I, I mean, I, I know that.
It's because it's listed, it's listed separately on the thing.
Yeah, but DESI says that you only need one year of a gym.
What?
DESI for high school. When I go onto the DESI site, it's, the high school requirement is one year of gym.
But we've, we've always exceeded it.
That's fine. I'm just, I'm just stating, like, I don't know why M A S C wrote it up as they did. And I don't really care for that matter. I just want it to match what, what we actually do.
And we do do eight credits total of health and phys ed, or what it's supposed to be, sorry. Two and a half, oh, so ten.
Yeah, on here, it's, looks like ten.
Yeah, which I think is what we do.
Is the chart part of the policy?
No, the chart is, 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 is Mr. Carney's, or the high school, rather.
That might be an easy fix.
Well, I think it's a policy fix.
It it isn't though, because the definition of physical education includes health, it's it's part and parcel.
Right, but I think we need, we need to bring it back and make sure that it's actually four years of physical education slash health, like, that that's a combined. I'm just saying, I think that this policy just needs to be reviewed and double-checked. It's a new policy, it it's not, it's not a problem, I don't think.
This is great, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I think, I'd love, just as a committee, we think of a better way to just move processes around, like this. You said it wasn't, we had no time to read the policies, or, or read the handbooks word by word, I was joking, but like, policy requests, like, that's easy. We had a meeting last week, we could have gotten that, you know, we can do it, that's, it doesn't have to be, um, I just would love us to figure out how to work.
Yeah.
Just more fluently, like, I love that, yeah, yeah, it's like not a big deal, but like, I don't.
Like, it's just got to go back.
Because you know what, honestly, even if I write it down, I go a little, I'm like, I'm a visual learner, I'm sitting over here, so, and I think I'd love for us to get back to kind of talking about.
Right, the man.
Yeah, yeah, so I appreciate, so appreciate it, but like, can we just figure out?
Like later, I get, yeah, that's got to go back to policy subcommittee is all I'm recommending.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we're getting a, when we get to policy, we're getting a schedule together, we'll add it, we'll get it, we'll make it right, perfect, awesome.
Anybody else?
Yeah, sorry, I do have another, Doctor Cummings, so I've sent you a huge list, and I don't apologize for it, but it is what it is. I sent you a large list of stuff to be questions or whatnot. And some of these questions still remain even after I received the the final copy. The district is really trying to shift away from specifying gender identity, and I, and I know that Mrs. Austin has worked very hard at this and I agree with it wholeheartedly, and I would love to see this manual, as I've stated before, not include he or she, he, she, son or daughter, girls. I don't, I, that's really got to get changed, when I made the suggestion to the middle school, they did it right away, they got rid of all the instances. I've identified all the instances, so it's right out. My other question is, that wasn't clear, clear to me, I I've never had a high school student, so I don't know, finals and midterms, is that still?
No.
We don't have those, that needs to get removed.
Yeah, that's been mentioned six, nine, like, ten times about high school, about midterm, and I, and I identified everywhere it was. You can look back to my emails that I sent you. Another question I have is regarding Saturday school, that's mentioned nineteen times, it's still mentioned nineteen times.
Yeah.
Is it a thing?
I believe it's still on the, I I believe it is.
It still is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then my other question is in regards to the section on cheating and plagiarism, I really feel that we need to address A I in that section. Kids are not copying Cliff Notes or books, they're, they're going to Chat G P T and they're typing in, write me an essay on the American Revolution.
I think that's a bigger conversation, I don't disagree with you, I think that's happening, actually proving that it's happening is a monumental task. And there's a role for A I in there somewhere in terms of our responsibility to teach students how to use A I.
Yeah.
In proper ways, so I do think that's a great discussion to have, for sure.
And then another note was, I had said that you and I worked hard at traffic over there last year, two years ago, it was a fun project, wasn't it? And the signs say ten miles an hour that we got installed, because you complained that some mother in a red car was driving too fast. And the, what's written in the book is still fifteen, I've stated this before, and then.
Yeah, I I'm pretty confident they'll, they'll be able to get to everything, I believe the list was given to them on Thursday.
Okay, and then my last thing was on free lunches, on lunches, the lunch program, we have, we do free lunches, that's really got to get addressed in the book.
Yeah.
That all sounds very doable, I'm sure, I will ask Mandy to make sure that is all done.
Anything else? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we'll go to a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. It's four, one, zero. Okay, thank you, everybody. Superintendent report, I'm sure it's going to be a barn burner.
Lot of H R stuff, actually, well, not a lot, but.
We build a new school over the summer, right, that's what I heard.
So I did put a slide together with all of our new hires, um, we are in a very, very good place with hiring. Probably more so than in years past, we also had a number of transfers this summer, which I haven't been in the role for very long, but I do think it's more atypical than in years past to see the number of transfers that, that we've had, so there are some names and positions that have moved around, Milbury Street School is a good example of that. But in terms of actual new hires to our school, at the high school, we're hiring Megan Tulpin and Sarah Sweeney both as math teachers, and where Mary Workmeister is joining us as a new speech language pathologist. In italics there, we have Melissa Matthew, she is our long-term sub nurse. Our nurse at the high school is out on parental leave. At the middle school, we've had Jennifer Guerin join us as the new world language teacher. And Lucy and Quirk is joining us as the eighth grade English teacher over at the middle school. We also have Kristen Grollow, she is kind of a new hire and kind of not a new hire. She has been one of our behavior specialist coordinators for a number of years, she's now transferring over to the position of intensive special needs teacher over at the middle school, we're thrilled to have her. We also have Kelly Sweeney joining us as a long-term sub for the school psychologist position. We do have a number of parental leaves in the district right now. Kelly's worked in our district in a couple of different buildings for these sorts of situations for a number of years, she's great. She knows a lot of the students, she'll be a wonderful addition to them. At North Street School, we have Jennifer Riendo, she's joining us as the new intensive classroom teacher there. We also have two long-term subs, Steve Curtis is going to be our instrumental music long-term substitute, and Leah Mattioli is going to be the long-term sub for the adjustment counselor over there as well. Robin Callahan is a familiar name to anyone who has been remotely related to Milbury Street School recently. She was a long-term sub for a number of different teachers last year, but she, we've hired her as a grade two teacher. And we're thrilled to have her. At South Grafton, we have Emily Ryan also joining us in the intensive classroom. We have Stephanie Brusso, who's been a paraprofessional for us for a number of years. She is certified and a grade one position opened up, and she's thrilled to be able to take on that. And Rachel Bloom will be joining us as the new speech language pathologist over at South Grafton. We did not have any new hires at North Grafton this year, surprisingly. We've had, you know, there's always a lot of movement in the world of paraprofessionals over the summer, folks get opportunities kind of like Stephanie did to take on teaching roles, or they're just moving on, and so those are the names of the paraprofessionals that we've brought on recently, like I said before, we're in a really good place hiring-wise in terms of coming into the classroom, coming into the school year, pretty much fully staffed, which, which is wonderful. Starting on Wednesday, we're going to be having our two-day new staff orientation. We run it for the full day on the twenty first and the twenty second, but we've, it's always a little different depending on who's joining our team. So you just heard me say the intensive classroom three times, right? So we're really designing the sessions specific to the roles. So this year, we determined that we can fit the sessions into both of the mornings and give the teachers the afternoons in their buildings with their mentors setting up, preparing, which we know that they need. We've also added paraprofessionals to day one of the new staff orientation, which we haven't done in the past. So we'll be running a specific orientation for them, going over the newly developed handbook that we're going to be providing to them. Really just welcoming them into the community, helping them make some of those initial connections. All of our district leadership members are running those sessions, have designed the content of those sessions. You know, Nicole McDonald is taking those special education team members. Steve Wiltshire will be taking the elementary kids, and Kevin and Tracy are taking the secondary, so it, it makes a lot of sense for them to be using that time in a really meaningful way. And like I said, the mentors will join at a minimum on that first day, and we'll connect with them, you know, about the the Grafton specific stuff. We also do have a couple of people who are very new to the world of education, so not just the Grafton specific stuff, but just getting them set up for success for day one. And then finally, I think I mentioned this a handful of times over the course of last year, we did move to a new mandated training platform. I know that this isn't the most interesting thing in the world, but it has made a huge difference. So we've partnered with Arcs Ed, it's a company that was designed by educators. And our old system of doing all those mandated trainings was really just a series of presentations that were linked on our website. Teachers and staff had to go to the links and read through the presentations, and then we were collecting hard copies of, you know, certificates of completion. It was difficult to track, we didn't know, all we knew was whether you had done it or you hadn't done it. We didn't know how much progress you had made, we didn't know how much time you were spending. Arcs Ed, it has been rolled out, I've already received a number of positive reviews from folks who have done it already. It's two hours max of their time, but there are much more engaging, interactive modules about content that is up to date, it's meeting all of the federal and the state regulations, and we get to see how far along people are in the process. We also were able to individualize the content by group or by department, right? So our custodian and maintenance team can do the asbestos training that Frank Rothwell is super passionate about, but, you know, our first grade teachers don't have to do the asbestos training, and, you know, that's just an example, but it's been really great so far. Gotten lots of good feedback, so it's making our lives a little bit easier too, which is nice.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question, do we need to approve the employee handbooks, I think that we have a policy that states it.
It's in our packet, I gotta read it.
Okay.
I think she's right, um.
I can't remember the policy off the top of my head.
No, me neither.
It's in our packet.
I know, I know a lot.
Be approved or brought before?
No, it needs to be approved by us, it needs the student and employee handbooks now, need to be approved by the school committee.
Yes.
Yeah.
C H C A, which we're talking about tonight, I think. Committee approval will be necessary for any handbooks that pertain to required standards of conduct for employees or students. So, you are correct.
All right, well, doesn't say when, so.
Right.
Oh, Mandy's been chipping away, I've shared, what, three of them?
Oh, yeah, we have, I, I, that won't be a problem for me to get those to you in the very near future.
Great, okay, thank you.
Great.
Thank you, thanks, Christie.
On the positive end, I should have mentioned it actually at the outset when we were talking about the summer programming. I wanted just to thank and recognize our maintenance department and custodial department, they've been doing a fantastic job. In some ways, the summer's been, I mean, they're always super busy, actually, but it's been really productive, we're getting so many projects done. The custodians do a fantastic job, and especially working around, and if you went to E S Y or Enrichment, that, that school's, it's busy, and we want kids there, we want them actively engaged, like, it's all great stuff, but they're taking up the space where back, you know, a decade ago, it was a ghost town. So they've done a really wonderful job, and we're, we're on track in, in every way. The one exception to that is this. We've had a roof failure on the, we've got four modulators at North Street Elementary School. They were installed, I want to say seventeen years ago, it was before I started here. The back of North Street, done really well, like, you can tell you're in a modular, but I've been in districts where they also have modulators that, it, it's like you're going into a, a different country, if you will, like a trailer. That's not the feel with these, they've got air conditioning, obviously, the brick siding, the whole bit, so they fit in really well with the school. They've got a flat roof, flat roofs have just never served us particularly well. The failure, and this is one of the newer roofs, if you will, even seventeen years, but it's around the edge of the entire square, if you will. And we found in July, what was happening was there was a failure, the water was puddling on the edges and just running down the sides. So the ceiling isn't damaged, none of the interior, if you will, is, but it did a real number on the, the sides. It had almost a, almost like a plasticky wallpaper on it, so it wasn't, I don't know, at my house, if we have frost eaves, you can see a leak and go, oh my gosh, you've got a leak. But because of that, almost like a wallpaper, we, we didn't know, a student was using it. One of the, at the summer programs, they were in there, and went to like hit a spider or something, and I think, actually, the kid's foot. And it went like into the wall, and the kid doesn't have like a giant foot or anything. And sure enough, like, that led to us diving into this, and I'm glad we did, I wish it, I wish, obviously, obviously, I wish we knew much earlier, so this has been a tremendous stressor, we have worked on this every single day. Tomorrow, we actually have a meeting with the roofing company and the insurance company. Insurance has been great, they came right out, we met with Evan, Evan went down, took a look at it with us, like, he's, he totally gets it. Cost-wise, the town is going to have to fund a new roof, everything else, Sheep Rock, anything internal is going to be covered by insurance, so that's, that's certainly a positive. So the meeting tomorrow morning is going to largely determine what our timeline is. Where, it's ranged from maybe six weeks into the school year at the most to a couple of weeks into the school year. They've done most of the demo already, they've been coming in over the weekend, so we're moving right along, but and we need insurance to confirm that we don't have damage in the basement, or we're not going to put on a brand-new roof, and we're ready to go. We could actually start tomorrow, the, putting the roof on takes only about three days, which, in the world of roofing, that, that's pretty quick. Weather looks good for the next couple of weeks, so we're, we're confident, once we get the go-ahead from insurance, we can get that roof on, and then right after that, or even in tandem, get the wallboard up, insulation, et cetera. In the meantime, Steve and Roseanne, Steve Wiltshire and Roseanne Karpaska, the principals, have communicated out to parents the plan, so we are dividing the library into two rooms, so two classroom spaces. And we're going to be using two of the music rooms, so short-term music will basically be on a cart. One of them is a band room, we do, we can basically do that on a cart for a little while, or use the cafeteria stage area. So we've got four good spaces, the teachers have come in, they've walked through, they're in support of the plan, I think it's a really good plan. Again, that's been communicated, and we've got our fingers crossed that the timeline tomorrow will be as short as possible. Any questions?
Any questions from the committee? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, no question, I just, first, Mandy, we didn't get a chance, I wanted to thank you for all your hard work over the summer. Summer seems like it wouldn't be a lot of work, I think, from the outside, but it's probably arguably one of the busier times, so thank you for all those new hires. And I just wanted to thank the North Street community for their, that communication I thought was right on. And just the flexibility of the students, the families and the teachers, that's not easy to move. It's not ideal, but it could be way worse, I mean, we've seen schools. So, thank you for getting on it, and, you know, it didn't happen in the winter, I mean, there's some bright sides for sure.
Could have happened at a much worse time.
Right, and thanks to the, thanks to Evan too, for.
Yeah, Evan's been great, I want to just say thank you, Frank Rothwell, and Shawna, I mean, every day they're working with the insurance company, the roofing guys, they're, it's been every single day, we've been working on this.
That's great.
I just wanted to add too, that I appreciated the, the timely communication with families, I know it's hard enough being in the building for them to see what the impact might be, and I know there are still questions, but I, I hope that. And I know there are still questions, but I, I hope that our families and that community feel well supported and that.
Yep.
That their kids are going to notice very little disruption, if any. I know that they, they made a point of saying that, you know, the library will still be accessible. I'm not sure how that's going to work and I don't want to get into it. But I think that that's important. I think that's one thing that people would be particularly keen on.
Yeah, that was one of our priorities all along.
Yeah, hopefully it's all resolved before we have to have a book fair in there.
We did actually luck out a little bit with the location. I mean, it could have been for right in, you know, right in the middle of the school that impacts everything. We've sealed this off. It's, we don't need any through traffic. That, that is one thing that was in our favor.
This is, at one point in the capital plan, we had the roof sections lettered.
Yep.
Do you happen to remember?
This isn't, this wasn't on there.
This is not lettered.
This was a good.
A good piece?
Yeah.
Of course it was. Okay.
So yeah, roofs have always.
I'd say it was built in like 2010 is my best guess. Two thousand nine, twenty ten, around then is when the one was built.
Yeah, so it should have been up. Okay. Well, thank you.
All right.
Sorry you having to deal with that. That's.
Working out, we will keep you posted.
Nervracking. All right. Moving right along to future agenda. So after tonight's meeting, we'll move contracts to the tenth. We'll put handbooks on the tenth if possible. I didn't know if anybody had any questions, comments. Concerns, this is the same, we'll look at this every meeting. I'm sorry?
You hear a noise?
It's when this shuts down, it's so loud. It will go off in a second.
There we go. Same schedule as last time. I, the, the student advisory council, I believe is what it's called. Is that what it's called? Not on here yet, haven't had a chance to work, work too much with that with the summer and everything, but I'm going to be getting right on that. Anybody have any questions, comments, things they want to add? All right. Seeing none, we'll move along. Approval of minutes.
Didn't you tell us we didn't have any?
I didn't think so. Thank you. Didn't think so.
Well, you don't want to say it because then you're like, if there are, you're going to be like, I obviously didn't read them, but I'm pretty sure there weren't any.
I was like, wait a minute, I don't remember seeing that. Okay, thank you very much. We have a whole bunch of warrants.
Madam Chair, can I ask you a question about the warrants?
Absolutely.
So the, I have warrant for R1 and then the warrant for, warrant for is not in the book, just, it's not really a question. It's just, I'm just, is that, am I missing something?
Dr. Kathleen, my, my impression was it was warrant five, warrant six and warrant for R1, which is for me.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's fine.
That was confusing.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I moved that the committee approve warrant W4, warrant for R1 in the amount of $1,459.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I move that the committee accept warrant five in the amount of $371,477.65.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I move that the committee accept warrant five in the amount of $206,232.12.
Did I, did I?
Wait, which one are you reading?
Six, yes, you meant.
Oh, did I say warrant five?
You did.
I, I sure did. Uh, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I move that the committee approve warrant six in the amount of $206,232,012.12.
Sure.
I second that.
We'll let it go. We know it's, you said thousand twice, it's fine. I used to do that all the time.
Two hundred and thirty-two thousand.
That sounds about right.
That's about, I mean, it's a lot of money.
Every time I'm reading the numbers, I'm like, I don't know.
All right, order in the court.
I've got to read numbers apparently.
All right.
I'm very good at math.
Any, any comments, questions, concerns?
No.
None.
Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
That's it. All right. Back to the agenda. Oh, I need to go back to future agenda for one second. I just wanted to make sure, we had taken an item off and I wanted to check in with the committee. I think I know the answer. We did not have food services come in.
We did not.
At the end of last year.
Right.
That was usually a thing that we had done when we had to set the lunch price. We don't have to do that anymore. I don't know what the food services folks would tell us, if we had them in, if we want to hear from them.
Last time they told us about the Chick-fil-A new sandwiches that they had.
They did tell us about food. It was kind of fun.
It was amazing.
If, if you would like, if you would, if the committee so desires, we can ask for them to come in at some point in our busy schedule.
I would like that.
I would love to hear from that.
Would you like to hear from food service?
Yeah.
All right, I will. I will, I'll make a note. Can't promise it's going to be soon, but.
Pressure food service.
I know I did talk about it with Jay, but.
I would actually like it, I think we usually do it at the end of the year.
We do, and we didn't.
I'd love to do it in the more so we can fire people up about school lunch, you know?
Yeah, I know. Especially now that it's free again.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Awesome, all right, I will.
Yeah, I mean, I know it depends on witnesses and everything in our schedule.
Yeah, we'll see what they say, but maybe the 24th, Jay? Can you ask them?
I can.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I think it'd be nice. I think it's just at the end of the year, it's weird.
Yeah, and I think we moved it because we had other things. And yeah, with free lunch, it seemed. But, okay, great.
Beginning of the year.
All right, so. Uh, policy. Turn the floor over to the policy subcommittee.
Thanks.
Can we follow the format I asked for last time? Redo the motion first from the committee and then do discussion?
Sure.
Yes.
Awesome. I think that helps with going quicker.
Although I would posit that we need to have some discussion on the first one before we go to a vote, because.
Fair enough.
Am I wrong?
I mean, you can make, we can make, I can make the motion, whatever Madam Chair wants.
Okay.
We can make a motion.
And then we have a discussion. Uh, Madam Chair.
Yep.
I'd like to recommend that we move BGF, petitions to review policy decisions, and we change it, we change the coding and put it under KG, under community.
Community relations.
Oh.
We approve this as a second reading.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded. Okay, now we can discuss. That makes a lot more sense when you say it that way. Thank you.
Before we get into discussion, if we could just explain our reasoning. Christie had pointed out that it was a coding issue. When we dove deeper into it, we realized this is some, for the public, it's not under B, which is committee kind of policies. K is for how does the community communicate, community communicate with us? And there is no KG. So we would like to have this policy as presented in KG. So now there's no longer a coding issue and we really think it should be under K rather than B for those reasons. Did I miss anything?
No, no. Basically, we believe it belongs under community relations. The policy is how it works today, right? It's appropriate, so, yeah, we'd just like it a second reading under the new code.
Okay, so no content changes from last time?
None, just the K.
Christie.
Uh, I, I just have a question, well, it's not really a question, regarding the coding change. So we use the New England School Policy Network, NEPEN, for the standardized coding. Yeah, that's a, it's a system just for anybody. It assigns unique codes, to simplify reference, blah, blah, blah.
Do you have a better code?
Well, the reason I'm, I cannot agree on KG because the reasoning is, is that that KG, even though we don't have a policy for it, KG is actually denoted as business and industry involvement in education, and that's not what this is.
Okay.
So I don't.
Do you have a recommendation?
Well, here's the thing. I've, I've read every code with NEPEN and they don't have anything for this. So I think it needs to be a like, a BGF dash or something, some kind of dash, because there's nothing for this type of policy.
I understand what you're saying and I get it. I mean, I don't really care that much, so I don't know why I'm going to put it. I mean, it really doesn't make a difference to me. So that's awesome. I do think, nope, it's fine. So what, BGF dash?
I, I don't care. One, two, A, B.
Why don't we, what do you think, Laura?
I don't think it's under, it's not like a dash to, to me, it doesn't go under BGF. It might more go under, I mean, because BGF is suspension of policies. So it doesn't, I don't know. I guess, what do I care that much? I mean, it's important that it's appropriate and people can find it.
Right, it's an important policy and we take policy very seriously, Laura.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, I wanted to, so yeah, as long as people can find it, I say let's go with that.
It doesn't feel comfortable to me under BGF, sorry.
Okay, do you have another recommendation? So the reason again why we did a K is even though, is all of our policies and MASCs for the community are under K. I don't know why they did it that way, but that's how we, that's how we do the K. So maybe I'm going to keep it a KG and we can vote. And if it sails, then we'll add in a one.
Could it be a BGB dash something, policy adoption? It just makes more sense to me there.
Right, what is it?
BGB.
Amazing.
So BGB has to do with adoption of policy and then this is a petition to review policy decision. See, it's about policy in, in practice. And that's why I keep going back to the K.
Right.
So I hear what you're saying, Christie. I'm just trying to figure out where it goes.
Right. I, I provided this last time and I think that Dr. Cummings put it in the drive. Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't come up with a recommendation.
Nope, Madam Chair.
I, I think that it should go under, as she was saying, BG, what did you just say?
BGB.
BG. B, because that's all about procedures for board meetings, voting, math, I, I don't, I don't know.
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend my motion to move this policy to BGB from BGF as presented.
So BGB dash something?
Nope, I think it's no dash, right?
BGB exists. BGB exists.
Oh, so we're going to do BGB dash one. This is how you get Frankenstein policies. But that's a future committee problem.
Okay, so.
I second the amendment. Do I have to second it?
No, you're fine.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion has been amended to move BGF to BGB dash one.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, yes?
I feel like it, well, my discussion is maybe we should look at where it goes first before, because it's like, I agree it should be under community. Maybe we can find a spot that fits better under community. There's just not a spot.
We already did that work, it's already been disagreed with. We've already had the motion. So it's important is where the community has been in. I mean, I, somebody else, you can vote it down. I think we're at the vote, Madam Chair.
Discussion's still open.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of moving BGF to BGB dash one and approving it as a second reading? Say aye.
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 Okay, five. Opposed, abstentions. Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on, CB.
You want to do it?
Yep, Madam Chair.
Yep.
I move that the committee consider moving CB from the Grafton policy to the MASC version of the policy as a first reading.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just wanted to clarify, on the agenda, there's, it said first reading, but we, or a second reading, but we're bringing it to a first reading because we technically, because there, we technically did it as a first reading, but then there was a recommendation to move it to the MASC policy and this is the first time we're seeing MASC. So that's why it had both, but it should be a first reading as motioned.
That is how I meant to say it if I did not.
Oh, you did.
You did.
Oh, okay.
Any further discussion? It seems like a good idea. One less policy we have to worry about. All right, seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. I don't know why I put a one there, that was not right. Okay. We'll go in the order of the agenda. Which means CHA. Which is development of school district procedures.
Yeah. Laura, you were going to take this one.
Oh, I was taking the next one.
Oh, I am?
But, it's fine. Can do both of them.
Take them both.
Yeah, okay. Sorry. Done a lot of this. Okay. I'm just. All right, sorry.
I'm sorry, I can do it.
Have everything in front of me. No, I apologize. I got it. The recommendation, I believe, is to replace CHA with CHA slash CHC, the MASC policy as a first reading.
I second that.
I'll allow it even though it was an emotion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's, no, it's fine. I'm taking it as a motion, that's fine. Yeah. Discussion. No discussion. So I have a question. Does that mean that this will be coded as both?
That's how MASC codes it, it's super weird.
It is the MASC code.
Just wanted to make sure I understood, okay.
So we are. So, we are-
All right. All right. Is there any further discussion on this? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Excellent. C, what's that?
Is that a first?
That is a first reading.
Yeah.
So, that is listed twice?
I don't, I think that's how I did it.
That's why I was confused. No, it's, it's not.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine. I was just for my own.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Had to look at it.
Moving on. CI, temporary administrative assignments. Take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we take CI as a second reading. Temporary administrative arrangements.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? This shouldn't be a surprise. We saw this last week, two weeks ago, three weeks ago. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.
I'll do the next one.
Um, IHBB.
No additional changes on this one. We're bringing it in as a second reading. Take a motion. Oh, sorry. Um, I move to, um, accept IHBB gifted and talented education as a second reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The abstentions. Okay. IIB, class size.
I'll do this one. Um, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Um, I'd like to recommend that the committee delete IIB in a class size.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any, you want to update us from the committee?
Yeah, so, we kind of took what Christie said and we were thinking this, um, was more of a value, a statement of belief than a true policy, especially because when we went over any number, we weren't doing anything about it. I do think we need to have a further discussion, especially as we go into an override year about what our values are and what we'd like to see maybe within the override. But I don't think it belongs in policy and I appreciate the input on that. So, we've now bringing it to the committee after the feedback from the last meeting and we recommend deleting it now. We don't think it belongs in policy.
Any discussion? All right, move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Um, JICB.
Do you want to take this one?
Oh, sure.
I don't remember what we-
Oh, I don't think there were any updates since last time.
Yeah, I don't know what the update is.
Madam Chair, I recommend the committee accept JICB care of school property by students as a second reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, sorry, aye.
Abstentions, aye now. All right, um, JICH.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
We recommend passing over this one.
Okay. JICH dash R. Breathalyzer testing protocol is marked as a hold. I didn't know if, now it says recommend removal.
No, that was-
That's the hold.
That's what I just, didn't I just recommend?
No, that was-
That was for drug and al-, drug, alcohol.
Oh, drug and alcohol, right.
I recommend, um, holding on JICH R.
Yep. And JICJ.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I recommend that the committee review a new policy, JICJ, a revised version, use of electronic devices in school as a first reading.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay.
This revised, um, policy is a lot more direct. And encompasses, uh, you know, sort of modern approaches to, uh, electronic devices. It doesn't mention, you know, the Microsoft run, for example, is an old MP3 player. Um, so. But, thank you. Many people who don't know what that is because they're younger, but, um, it, this one's just a little bit more modern, all encompassing. So, we recommend the committee take a look at it.
Okay. I had a comment on this one.
Can I have a, a question for subcommittee? Where did this policy derive from?
So, we had done some research among, um, different districts over the country. We actually pulled this one from Virginia.
What is the school?
Fairfax.
Thank you.
This was one that we liked. At least, I think we had talked about we might do more additional work on this, but we feel better going forward with this. And we've also talked about how, um, in handbooks, there's some more stricter policies that schools are, are doing. I would like to have a deeper dive into-
This is probably not the last time we're gonna discuss this one for sure.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but this one is, is frankly more appropriate for this time. It's just more appropriate.
Um, I would like to ask a question. What, did the committee consider the MAS C version and if so, what's the reason for not adopting it?
I don't believe there is an MAS C version on this policy.
Right.
JICJ, use of technology in schools.
JICJ.
I'm looking at it.
I don't, I don't, I don't use of-
And I recognize one of the lines from it as one that we used to have in another, a version of this policy a long time ago and we removed it. And that has to do with the form that we ask parents and guardians to sign for students under the age of eighteen. It also speaks to the, there is no expectation of privacy, which I think is important. I'm all for approving this tonight to have something on the books.
This is a first reading anyway.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
We need to come back, so we'll take your feedback and, and revise.
Great.
Yeah.
Cool.
And we have something, we have something on the books, which, you know.
Yeah, that's true. It's just-
It's not great, but we have it, so it's fine.
Yeah, that's true.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, that's what I'm saying about-
As long as it's not contradicting what the, what the quote unquote new procedures are, I just, you know, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I tend to agree with, Mr., sorry, Madam Chair, I tend to agree with you that we should, if we, if MAS C has a version on it using theirs to help utilize the whole reason we're switching over to MAS C, like, to make it more streamlined and less policies we need to keep maintaining. That's a great idea.
Yep, heard, noted. I think we got excited about Virginia. It was short.
Yeah, we just liked this policy, I think.
Absolutely.
Yep. Well, I will, is there any other discussion on this particular reading? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you very much, Policy Subcommittee. Uh, member reports. Are there any member reports?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I just, I had a member of the Select Board reach out regarding the TRICOM Committee, which I believe is me and Christie. So, um, do you know who the current chair of FINCOM? Is it still Mr. Moore?
So, yes, he is still the chair. Um, they have not re- to re- met to reorg. That will happen in October.
Okay.
But as of right now, he is the chair and he's been asking me who is on the committee and how we get together, so I think great minds and all that.
Awesome.
Um, I know that both the Select Board and FINCOM received the, uh, projections for the district. And we happened to talk about that recently, so, yes.
Awesome. All right, so, he put aye out and we'll get something on the schedule earlier, the better. I know the Select Board, that's a shame, Mr. Alamo left, but I know this is on.
Nice to see him here.
He's on. He is. Yeah. Yeah, he is.
Yeah.
So, um, they're having their goals tomorrow, which is what kind of made me think I'd like, one of their goals to be to help, help pass an override for the schools, but perhaps I'll send their chair an email. What?
That's an open meeting, right?
Yeah.
Is it downstairs?
No.
Interesting.
I think it's, it's public, but it's not downstairs. We kind of used their room.
Great. Well, good luck to them.
Mm-hmm.
Any other committee reports? I have, uh, one. In my comments at the end of last meeting, um, when I was very excited about the upcoming Olympic Games, I said something to the effect of maybe someday Grafton will, uh, produce an Olympic athlete. And it turns out we have. Connie Postera, who is herself an alumna of Grafton High School, reached out, um, and pointed out that Bethany Hart, who attended Grafton High School and was a track and field star here, uh, competed in the two thousand and six Olympics, which I watched, in Torino, Italy as a bobsledder.
Awesome.
Cool.
So, I, I regret my error. Thank you to Connie for reaching out. Um, I think that's awesome. But maybe, maybe it's time for another one because it's been a while.
Very cool.
Maybe our track and field coach can, can get on that. The middle school track and field coach.
Retired.
Yeah, that's my, that is my member report for this evening.
Excellent.
Um, is there any correspondence?